Thank you all for coming out to our board meeting this evening. I'd like to officially call the meeting to order at 7:08 PM. Monday, February 12, 2018. Roll call please. Okay Simmons.
Allison.
Nelson.
Here.
Griggs.
Here.
Blackman.
Here.
Paredes.
Here.
Huckabee.
Here.
Ford. Here and here is Ms. President, thank you. First item on the agenda, audience comments. No one's signed up, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda which is super recognition. Western Avenue students, Dr. Clark.
We're recognizing our students from Western Avenue have their participation in the spelling meeting. There are a number of students that we'll recognize, we would like to have four of them with us tonight. We had two teachers who were brilliant and spearheaded the activity that Shane and Lloyd and Kat decided else. We're going to tell them for their efforts. You know, just the students who participated. We do have one more speaker, yes. As I said, we do have four students with us, we have Carrington Hughes. Come on, come on up.
Wait, 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 I was...
After we call up, I'll give you an opportunity. Carrington, come on up. Isaac Griggs. Rachel Griggs. Just a few other students who could be with us tonight. We'll say their names and we'll give them applause and accentuate. Bryn Williams, Reagan Si, Russell Harris, Mia Caprally, Vivian Dixon, Corbin Saunders, Cameron Coop, Ava Nickerson, Noel Dolan, Annalee Slater, Logan Jackson, and you and Doug.
So, this is not an ordinary spelling meeting, for me, at least. This was nineteen rounds. Can you believe that? Nineteen rounds. It was over three hours. Words included, because I wrote them down, supercilious, sanguine, rhododendron, clamoring, excruciating, very even. So, I am incredibly proud of everybody standing up today. And I have a little poem about spelling these that I wanted to read for all of you. Just because I think they're pretty cool and I want to honor these kids because it was amazing what they did. So, are you ready? Okay, here we go. I never heard those words before. Their meanings were elusive. To those upon the stage, such facts were merely inconclusive. Derivations made it clear which letter groups were needed. Concentration ruled, distractions vanished or conceited. Vinylists competed with such fierce determination. Anything but winning was a starry constellation. Yet gamely each one proved to be supportive and connected, though rivals they could empathize when someone was objective. I stayed up past eleven till the battle was concluded, delighting in the quiet joy the champions endured. How wonderful that in this high-tech world where we are dwelling, we still admire these rare souls who so excel at spelling.
Okay, next item on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Good thing, so last night we had an opportunity to call a snow day because of the kind of weather. I really want to thank the director of buildings and grounds, Scott Stajic, reporting on our school's snowing weather. And making sure that all of our buildings were prepared for students this morning. I have heard from a couple of parents in the community about some sidewalk issues in Flossborn in general. I do know that the Park District has been working nonstop to clear the snow from our shared areas and passages and really focusing on the vital areas. I'll stay in contact with the other governmental groups to share that information with them and find other opportunities to work together on contingency items. If you receive a large amount of snowfall that they can't keep up with. I'm also happy to report that the Facebook post, canceling schools, most by far the most to date, 2,656 people saw that one, but only 100 people responded to that once before that. So, I guess we know what gets the people with them. We're anticipating that our new last day of school will be June 7th. So, before we make that official, try to get to the next couple of weeks of weather before we submit all that information to the state. But right now, we're anticipating June 7th as our last day of school. We're in the process of meeting with our building principals to review our anticipated student staffing numbers for next year. We want to make sure we're using all of our human resources effectively. On February 26th, we'll present the initial staff plan to the Board of Education for discussion. Today we also have the second scheduled meeting with a number of staff members from Harper Jr. High to focus on retooling the whole schedule frankly, to create the best possible outcomes for students. I'll tell you, it's engaging conversation, it's focused on the children, it's really making sure that our structures are in place to provide the most rigorous education possible and as much intervention and opportunities for success for children we can fit into the schedule. So, we're close to having a draft schedule, we'll bring that back to the Board of Education for review along with all the staffing information as well. And finally, we're really proud of our 734th basketball team, which will be traveling to Normal, Illinois tomorrow. They are playing the team from Hyatt Middle School in El Cockham for third place in the state tournament. That game is at 6 o'clock PM. Game was originally scheduled for last Thursday evening, but with the approaching snowstorm, the decision was made to postpone the event and frankly, and thankfully, the IESA was supportive of that decision. Though the student athletes will give their best effort, I'm looking forward to recognizing their accomplishments at a future board meeting. That's it.
Any questions or comments?
I do have one. So, the snow day that we had, was, are there snow days that are generally built into the calendar? Are the decisions that we can, if the last day that ever impacted us anymore?
Right, so, you were supposed to end on the sixth, usually building five snow days, five emergency days just in case. So, June 7th is the 30th.
Past graduation as well?
No.
Next item on the agenda, we have community engagement committee, but I don't think we actually have any updates unless you...
Well, we haven't, since last time we met, we had coffee with District 161, that was here. It was a pretty well-attended event, again, that was our first event in the morning. We had fourteen families, or fourteen parents come out, moms and dads. We had a lot of, just good organic conversation. I would say we probably talked for about ten minutes about the direction of the district, our finances, curriculum instruction, most basically. But then we really just opened it up to questions about topics that people are most interested in. And it was good conversation. I think the questions were probably evenly split between our elementary program and our junior high programs. We did come away with some information that we can use for setting up additional parent opportunities. But we do have our next community engagement committee, we'll talk about the rest of the dates through the rest of the year. We should really probably move this event, it won't be coffee necessarily, but something with District 161 in the evening, to a lot of working parents to have access as well. I think as I said, we'll take the information back, review it, and figure out how we can operationalize some of those requirements.
So, do we have a date for the next community engagement committee?
We don't, we can wait.
Okay, and then, do you have a potential date for the next coffee chat? That'll be a little cooking chat, everyone's coming to a coffee chat. Put that on.
That's a working title.
Six members. Right, so, do you have a date for that?
We do have a date. So, if we could, we could get some dates with board members, Griggs and Paredes to set up in our communication committee and get the agenda posted for that. Not sure about your availability. Probably anytime after... Probably anytime after the 26th, we will support it.
Okay.
Anytime. All right, so why don't we turn to the plane on the 28th? At 6:30, we are rotating, so I want to...
Who's our last school?
Wait, our last school is in Flossborn, huh? I can, I'll check this out.
And then you'll, we can just put us now in the next...
Absolutely.
...the other meeting. I did attend that, I know Karen was there too. Frankly, I thought it was, it's a nice attendance, a lot of great discussion, very many. So, you know, people were also pleased to have the opportunity to be able to amend the whole idea to give people the opportunity to talk to the board, well, actually, we didn't talk, we just, yeah. To talk to administrators outside of the school board's seven. So, glad people came out. So hopefully, we do it in the evening and forever, you know, we'll need even more conversations too.
I think if we could, if we could check the general building schedules, maybe jump on with another activity, whether it's PTO meeting at a school or just some other event and catch your things over already there, maybe even more minutes.
Next item, consent agenda. Approval of consent agenda items listed below, which includes minutes of regular board event meeting on January 9th, executive session. We're going to pull the executive session meeting minutes for January 9th. I'm sorry, it's 22 seconds. Let me start over, so. Approval of consent agenda items listed below, which includes minutes of regular board event meeting minutes for January 9th, executive session meetings, meeting minutes for January 9th. We will take out... Okay, so we will keep special board event meeting minutes for January 2nd, but we will pull out executive session meeting minutes for January 22nd. Consent agenda items also include approval of the personnel report. Next item is PLC, or annual of understanding. The last item, item E, is period of 4A request. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda items as I just listed them?
So.
Huckabee, any second, please. Dr. Griggs, roll call, please. Okay Simmons.
Yes.
Griggs, yes. Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Ford. Yes, and the motion is passed. Next item, next several items, I think, are information only items.
If there are any questions specifically about, otherwise, we just have the information, we'll bring them back later.
Three on here, soccer, soccer, kind of a program, soccer stipends, contract for SMD substitute, Timberly Outdoor Education contracts. Those are the three items listed under information only. Here is a discussion.
I just have one quick question. For the outdoor education, do we receive any type of discount? I know it's the first year we're doing this, with this particular venue, but do we receive any type of discount? So, maybe students there or...
I don't believe that we do receive a discount.
Any other questions?
On the soccer program, how does that coordinate or align with the Harvard program? Or is, what's the season going to be, just sort of a call?
I love them. Friends, you know, for the soccer stipends, when those seasons run, for both boys and girls?
Definitely, we have a fairly robust soccer program in each other with Harvard. Very near your parents' expectation, but it's there. And certainly, I think it's a good idea to have at Harvard, but the timing is not right. You might be competing for players.
Potentially. Because this would be a new sport for the conference, for the whole conferences and soccer.
I would imagine that the fall would be a bigger draw for, for kids playing soccer. And, you know, as much as, you know, kids certainly play in the off-season, and this program is very heavily played in high school. But, and, you know, of course, I think it is fantastic that we're doing this. Another great sport to add to our list activities, not just in our, our school, but also in our conference. But yeah, so I'm looking forward to it. Especially, I hope the sign will light up at some point, but so, we'll see.
We can check if there's, you know, if there's any flexibility in the conference to do a bit. I guess it's probably not.
I was just curious if that conversation may add, I was thinking it's a big decision, but some proactive discussions with the Park District might ease inevitable tension.
Sure, absolutely. It's a great idea.
Any other questions? Move on to agenda item number eight, tax abatement.
We did say that we would bring this item back to you, determine what you want to do about potential abatement. If you wanted to abate, we would have to have everything done and filed with the county clerk's office by April 1st. Actually, it's April 2nd, so Sunday. At this point in time, though, I mean, your projections are running, for the exception of construction, you're running right there at break even, where we're at kind of a point where we could possibly continue to have positive operating budgets. But if you abate, there is, you're going to be taking that out of the cap down, so we won't be able to have an operating surplus for sure. We would definitely get running a deficit position. Again, keeping in mind too, if you just did one year, the second year, you would be doubling up on the taxpayers. If you wanted to abate and not have an impact on the tax bills, you would have to do that until the rest of your bonds will continue, will finish paying off. So that, that would be the other piece to it. So I guess really, this is, I'm looking for direction in front of you. Is this something we want to continue to pursue, or are we ready to not pursue? I need, I need that direction, so I know where to go.
If I'm understanding the agreement, the handouts are provided correctly. So we're running around a million, three million dollar deficit in this year, in the next basically year, due to construction.
Correct.
And then, in the following years, 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, we'll be running a deficit for an increase in each year up to 400,000. And that's if we abate?
Nope, that's without, that's without. Those are just general projections out, abatement would be on top of what you're seeing right now. And again, you know, when we get out to 2022, 2023, I mean, that's a little too far out to really be comparable with those numbers. But that's just running those percentages that you see here, which is really just under a 2% increase in expenditure. Because we don't anticipate seeing very many much increase in revenue.
So, the current bonds are available in 2022?
No, we've got about seven years left on that.
And how much would abatement add to that deficit?
Depends on how much you would want to abate, because that would up to 1.1 million dollars if you could abate. I certainly wouldn't recommend doing that. I think the board had talked before about half a million dollars, which is about the same as the increase in the levy amount. So, that would be an additional half a million dollars every year. On top of what we're seeing. Correct.
For the duration of the, for the next six...
If you didn't want the taxpayers to get hit with that double levy, which would be your normal increase plus the putting on the abatement, you know, not renewing the abatement.
So where would this, also, the next question is, do we have any major construction projects we're going to do? We now, and it's time to respond to that.
So far as life safety and absolutely mandated projects, no, not to the extent that we're seeing this last summer here. Does that mean that you won't have construction to do, you're going to have your normal maintenance and so on? And then, of course, I know as you're going to be talking about the steam lab at Serena Building, depending on what you then want to do with the other buildings, that's going to be some money that would have to come out of also fund balances. So I can't say no, am I saying that it's going to be, you know, nothing to the degree that you're seeing this year. I mean, this year you're looking at close to 4.2 million dollars. But, nothing like that, but you are still going to have capital expenses to maintain these buildings and then when you start considering things like steam labs and the other on the building.
Well, I know my personal opinion is that, I mean, I would like to see what the projections are like with, with the abatement. I understand it's a scary decision to potentially spend half a million dollars a year on Javon. Paid off a little bit early. But we do have a bit of a surplus fund balance. I have a question for us, can we do it safely? From our prior discussions, I think we want to maintain a fund balance of 15-ish. And we don't ever really want to go below that. But can we, can we get there between now and 2024, 2025, when the bond will pay off? Or are we going to go below that?
If you're, if you're talking about 15 million fund balance, we can maintain that.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
So, you know, I guess like you or everyone else, there's not just, you know, more than you're, just me, but... You know, money that's tied up, it's something like fund balance, this capital is not really good at earning, it's real.
I guess if I had a better understanding of what the next seven years looks like. I heard friends saying some major economy expected year for year. But I think I wouldn't mind seeing those projections, but I'd also want to have in my head what the next seven years looks like that we're not already thinking about and that we need to... That would be helpful.
So one of the things, we're going to bring a full capital review to the board in June, which will review all of our fiscal plan items and ultimately, give us a basis to do a capital review process as a board, to say where we are going to go the next few years. So I think the timing is, is challenging as Bryn has laid out. Really, once you make this decision year one, you have to commit. So you're in for a pound, 500,000 a year over seven. Excellent, simple. So, we can actually bring back what the projections would be based on the abatement?
This decision has to be made in April? We have to have the resolution by, by April 2nd. So you have to take action through March 12th meeting.
The steam lab at Serena, that we're going to talk about a little bit further down the agenda. How much of that projected total is being funded by our government?
All of it.
Including the teacher?
No.
No, that would be a terminal cost.
And if this pilot program takes root like we all hoped it will, we'll soon implement something similar District 1, which will cost about the same per building, if not more. Okay, so that's, that's a billion five, plus, plus additional educators. No, that's including projections. My understanding from what's been a very robust and ongoing dialogue on this topic was that we were going to give Dana and his team a year to get their feet under them with the working knowledge that they were to budget in a very appropriate way as we go forward and that we would attack this at next year's levy. So, I'm not sure that we're in a position to make an educated decision on abating taxes at this point in time given all the unknowns and uncertainties and the timeline that Mr. Bell was describing.
I don't think that we need to wait. That's our operating budget, abatement is separate from operating budget. Abatement's a question of fund balance, not can we cut 2% from our operating budget and maybe not do it to extend its levy next year. But we can't keep putting the decision off. Bottom line is, this school district, like all of the Illinois school districts, are spending significantly more personally than our neighboring states. You know, taxpayers are, they have a legitimate complaint with the costs of education. And that legitimate complaint is based in large part because the Illinois schools are spending significantly more for, at best, the same results, in the most cases, course results. We can't keep putting it off. That applies as much to us and our, our students spending on, it's more than Indiana, it's more than Wisconsin, it's more than Iowa. I've yet to find anyone explaining to me why that is, because we're doing it. So we keep putting off the idea of providing some relief to taxpayers, you know. I said before, we need to perform first, and that's our first priority, but we can't ignore the fact that we are not operating efficiently and we can't ignore that nature. Same debate being played out at the state level where, you know, the Board of Education is promising more money to schools and we heard from Mr. Riley and others, and they have, you know, they have our best interests in mind, but they're only talking about one half of the budget. You know, the counterargument to that is, how can we, how can the state dump millions more into schools when no one is explaining why we're spending more to get less? So, this is fully within our control. I think the discussion of operating budget is totally separate. This is just, we have fund balances, what are we going to do with them, you know, going forward? Actually, the steam lab, we discussed that a little bit, but I think the dollar amounts being quoted here are outrageously high.
I'm not sure how you separate capital and operating fees, they're all paid from a bucket. Capital projects can... Capital projects can be to some extent planned and debated, but there are often situations that arise that are unplanned, yet need to be addressed.
Sure, because those are budgeted for. It's the best plan you can do. We've, you know, the budget reflects our, you know, expected costs. There's snow removal and everything else and some years we're in and some years we're out. Those are already budgeted for. We have a working budget, we know the deficits. Our Fran has shown a year, I figured that she's able to project as well as anyone can with our expense curve. So it really comes down to if we add, you know, we're looking at cumulative from now through 2023 on this projection. Let's see, three, four million plus another, let's call it, let's round up to five million. Five million deficits from now through 2023. I don't even know what we're going to do. So abatement would be 500,000 a year for seven years. So that's about three and a half, that's eight and a half million dollars. Our current fund balances are, where are they, Fran, 27?
All right, so you'd be taking that three and a half up to like 25,800. So you'd be down to 22 million?
So we'd be down to 22 million in 2023.
But that's without, again, anything else, without steam lab, without?
Sure, but if our, if we're comfortable with 15, and I don't think we should hold Fran's feet to the fire. And I'd like to give her time to tell us if she's not comfortable with that, but worse, that's still $7 million to deal with first. That's steam lamination, whatever, it's a lot of money. So it's not crazy saying we can abate. It's not premature. You know, we can't spend a week forever and have every duct in a row because it's never going to happen.
I think that, if I may, that the first conversation really has to go to, what do we want to see? And I think that that is something that really the administration really has to give it time to really formulate a plan to look at our, our resources, including our fund balances.
What do we want to see in terms of numbers, Dana?
Well, just in terms of, you know, what is the, what is the, at the end of a year, what do we want to see? Do you want to see skyrocketing test scores? Do you want to see kids involved in enriching programs? Do you want them to be imbued with all the benefits that come with the steam lab? Whatever that vision is, however it comes together, we, I think we have to start building the envy model. And then we have to start walking back and looking at what resources do we need? So, you know, while I appreciate that, yes, you know, it'd be great if we spent less money, be more efficient. I think we have to look at, well, are we cutting into muscle or are we cutting into fat? So a couple of years ago, Fran and her team did a really excellent job of looking at really all of our programs and finding out, you know, where are we most efficient, right? And I think we really wound up, very, very honestly, looking at what worked, what had value and what, you know, maybe could be adjusted or, you know, changed or even added to. And at the end, if we're all on board with, yes, we seem to have a much more efficient system here. And I really think that we have to look at that sort of analysis before we start thinking about reducing our resources.
That's a bright, bright compromise. But this has nothing to do with cutting muscle or fat. That's our operating budget, that's what we're doing. And we, and I agree with John, we've all, I think we have a consensus that we're hoping to hear from the administration over the summer, what the plans that, what backup. This is just, we have money sitting in the bank. Are we going to use it to pay property taxes or not? So even if we went forward, we would still have, back at the envelope half, 22 million in reserves in 2023. This is not a risky decision.
Well, I think that is.
And then all we're asking at this point is, really at this point, it comes down to this. Am I alone on this? In which case Fran would be wasting her time to finish the projections and give a more detailed presentation? Or are the other board members interested in seeing the details?
I would be much more interested in seeing what we could do with the difference between the 15 million dollar balance and our current balance. And I would, as much as we're looking into, you know, expanding this steam lab as we do hope that our pilot program takes off, I would be much more interested to know what we could, what we could do with what we have this year. And then, you know, after we've exhausted that lens and we've got a very clear idea of what we can do, which of course we rely on our superintendent businesses. It's not completed in one year here. And our administrative team. After that, I think that once we get a report about where we are, where we need to go, what we're going to need, that, at that point, I would be more interested in looking into possible abatement. But for this year, certainly I, I am all for finding out what the administration has to say and, and pursuing any sort of programs that they really think are worthwhile and possibly looking at what we can do after that in terms of innovating the abatement. So this, in short, for this year, I have it not for. Future years, we'll see.
I would like to see what future numbers look like. But I also think that, and I could be wrong on this, as we have looked at these projections as we go, and again, Fran and her team, they did an excellent job with all of this. But I think that the missing piece to all of this is, we talk about now because of taxes, abatement, all of that, because it impacts us for years to come. But we also have an opportunity, again, come next year to talk again about levies. We also have a chance again, if I'm correct, to again, talk about abatements. But I know that the impact of what we do today, you know, certainly impacts us for years to come. But again, I would like to see what future numbers, you know, look like in order to make a more informed decision. Because I don't think we have all the pieces just yet. But again, you know, we, again, and I have said this a number of times, we need to provide some type of, we need for taxpayers. And we need to stop thinking that we do not live here. We live here in this district. And so we need to have as much information as possible to make a better, more decision.
Any other comments?
So my fundamental issue is we marry the, the taxes going down with, so granted, the, our district, school districts take the lion's share of tax money, but it is no guarantee that the immediate relief that everyone is seeking, they are going to get. So my concern is always, you know, you cut off your nose despite your face. So we get the impression that we are going to save our community money and then we end up hurting the schools. We can't fly the way we want to and we can't bring in movements and then for our programs, we can't afford it. So that is my concern overall because school, public school is not a money-making business. We get our levy taxes. And so it's more of a systemic problem. I agree with Cam. It's, it is a way bigger issue on how complicated things are and how we get our funding. But I just have a real concern with sacrificing our students and our administration and our teachers because it's always, but then what happens is, then what happens? When that bill happens, then does anyone remember this conversation now? Or now do we just look at, you know, how crap is our school is because we couldn't do this and we couldn't do that? And so, I mean, these are, I get it, but that, that is just not overall concern. I just would never want to cut our kids short with absolutely no guarantee that the community is actually going to get what they think they're going to get. And then it just puts the school in jeopardy.
Is there any way to quantify that, Fran? I mean, what, what does that mean at the end of the day in terms of the savings for residents?
Once again, I mean, not only can I not give you an answer, I really can't give you an answer because people would just try to leave.
Right.
So I don't know, I can't say that everyone's property values went up X and those are going to go up Y. It's a whole shuffle of the pie here. So what, the only thing I can say to you with utter confidence is that if you do this, some people will see our proportion of the bill go down, but not in totality. And some people will see our proportion of the bill still go up. I can't tell you what that's going to be because it is not going to be that. It'll go across the board, no matter what. That I can say with 100% confidence.
So whether we have this discussion, whether we continue to have this discussion now or we hold off to have this discussion later on when we start talking about the levy again? Your answer to that question, I think, will always be.
Probably be the same, yes. Because the system that we are compelled to, you know, be trying to, you know, fix here, it's going to depend on who's, who's, you know, appealing their taxes and, and there's just so many moving parts and you do not have control of that. And on top of that, you are only one of several taxing bodies. So remember, people don't say just have that one piece as to what you want. It's that total bill. Yes, we make up a third of that bill. I get that. But still, I can never give you an answer to that with 100% confidence. Not with.
Is anybody aware of any of the other local taxing bodies that are considering or discussing abating portion of the tax rate?
No, I don't think anyone, I don't think any of the local taxing bodies are in a position to do it. I don't think any of them are in a position to do it. I know that Fosmore, Bill Fosmore, for example, is looking at deficits in terms of warranty and cost. I don't know what the part district, 153 is struggling a little bit financially. I don't mean, they're not in terrible shape, certainly not looking at the fund balances we're looking at.
233?
233, so they're, well, they're probably closer, closer to, closer analogy, they have a board policy of, is it nine months? Uh, I think it's nine months of operating budget. So Fran says 15 million, which is about six months of our cooperating budget. So she's comfortable with 15 million reserves. Over at 233, they have a board policy that their reserve policy is nine months. And of course, their budget is much bigger than ours. I don't know off the top of my head where that number is.
I think they're 40 months.
Yeah.
The number isn't, it's the percentage.
And so.
My guess is nine months of their operating budget is a bigger percentage than six months of ours. So their relative fund balance is greater than ours.
Right, and then the question is they have a surplus on top of that. And my belief from the, they just decided to spend, it's a fine arts thing, right? So I believe they have a surplus and I believe that's going through their fine arts program.
Is that, is that coming right out of their budget or is it in debt or?
No, I believe it's coming out of their fund balance surplus.
I believe we're taking out a surplus. My understanding was, I know that they were still discussing abatement, but I do not know what that conversation is.
So that would be like us taking our surplus instead of taking our abating spending on a grand thing like, I believe that's what they're doing. They're spending like 700, 900 on the fine arts.
So, I mean, I agree with a lot of the comments I think that were, were made. I mean, I personally would appreciate Fran actually taking time and doing whatever assessment you want to do and then tell us what, what fund balance, number of balance you feel most comfortable with. And I don't, you don't have to answer that right now. I mean, but I would love for you to actually really think about with a number or percentage or however one the term it looks like. And then for us to have a discussion about, you know, are we comfortable with that? Do we want to create a policy where we want to make sure no matter what, you know, we've got nine months of, I mean, so we need to have that discussion about our fund balance. I think the other piece is, for me, Steve, I appreciate your comments because, you know, I think we could have a conversation about, if Fran's magic number is 15 and we've got, you know, 27 million in our fund balance, how do we, and we agree, we're comfortable with bringing that fund balance down? What's the, how do we want to spend it? Do we want to use it for tax abatements? Do we want to use it to support capital improvements? Do we want to use it to support the creation of stimulus? I have no idea what the answer to that question is. But to me, I feel like we need to at least start with a realistic number with where are we comfortable with having our fund balance? And then sort of work backwards from there. I have no issues with, you know, it sounds like, Cam, you just did a lot of the mental math for us. So I'm not sure how much more Fran needs to have. But before you did the mental math, I would have said, yes, I'd actually would like to see what, what does it, what do the numbers really look like over the next seven years? But I think to me, the most fundamental piece right now is where are we as administration and board comfortable with having our fund balance? And then having a robust discussion about what do we feel the best use of that, that difference between where we are and where we're comfortable at being? What's the best use of those funds?
If we set a very clear direction and we're moving towards that with the data warehouse, the other side of that conversation, very clear action plans. And frankly, a discussion about what do we look like in three years? If we all agree that abating may not have any effect on anyone's taxes, then the conversation becomes one of how much of our fund balance do we want part of? Right, it becomes a little bit less emotional because it may not affect anyone at all because everyone else around us is extending a full levy. We can also have that conversation in relation to the tax levy. Because both of those separate actions together could be very challenging from a budgetary perspective. Deciding to abate, deciding to eliminate the levy, now that none of those deficits become potentially permanent. So we can absolutely bring back the information here. Choosing to abate too aggressively at this moment though, would be a one-off decision, potentially outside of the other information on where we're actually going. I know we have a strategic plan, but as far as it being our decision-making roadmap, it's not there yet. So this is a decision that's based on providing relief to taxpayers. But it's separate from our educational mission and the goals that the board has set forward in the strategic plan.
I don't even, it's not just providing, it's the taxpayers. It's just we have recent, we have fund balance in the night. Or we have no plan to use this year. We have no plan to use in the next five years. We could, if I'm taking the numbers correctly, we could up our comfortable fund balance to 18 or 19, pay for all those steam labs and abate. And we see that enough to do all of it. So I, if we're just afraid of spending the fund balance, we're just leaving money, we're just leaving resources on the table. As far as, and I thought, what I, at least what I took away from our discussion around the levy, she, you know, the levy has a lot more risk with not extending. You know, because we could put ourselves in a situation where we have a current deficit. There is far less risk with saying, okay, we got to extend the levy over here to be safe. But we can always abate afterwards and there's no, you know, no permanent risk to that decision. So I'd say my case, but I think that, you know, we don't see the need to wait. We have a lot of pressure.
Well, I, I don't think anybody, I didn't hear this, but I don't think anybody is in disagreement about spending down the fund balance. I don't think, I think, I don't think I heard that. I think where we, where I feel like people want further conversation is how do we want to spend it and what do we want to spend it on? Is that a correct perception?
Yeah, I, my struggle is I don't know, you know, so Dana mentioned the capital review. You know, at a meeting not too long ago, we talked about wanting innovative ideas and.
and we wanted, we kind of charged the administration with, tell us what you think it will take to get us to the next place. And I don't feel like I have a sense of how much that's going to cost. And so I, I, I am with you, Michelle, in terms of, I just don't know. I want to be physically responsible based on what the administration is saying they need to be able to take us really into the, they're not, they're, they're in one year on the ballot yet. So that's my, it's about how to best spend it, how to be most responsible given what we know in our head and what we want. So 7 million could be a lot, but it could also not be enough. That's possible, right? You can imagine, I can imagine a situation where it would not be enough maybe. So, um, I don't know. I don't, we don't know yet, right? We haven't heard that yet. So that's my...
Is there a different number? The number that you choose to abate is just a number you choose to abate. Increase or decrease the amount of risk. Remember, we talked about half a million, but I think it's not half a million. Remember that? That's every year until it's paid off. So is there a different number that people feel more comfortable with abating for the next seven years that still gives us the flexibility to move forward?
Well, I hear Carolyn and Steve saying what they're really waiting for. Do you have any major projects waiting in the industry you're going to come up with? Or, you know, that they're concerned that if we're giving you guys a hard time today about scores at Parker or whatnot, that they want to make sure they have resources to be able to do that. So, you know, and a total number, let's say we did 100,000 a year, I mean, that would be a token gesture. It would have probably no real meaning for the taxpayers, but, you know, we do it. You have, you know, for Fran's comments, you have to be careful. You know, certainly safer to err on the side of a little low so that if we decide to appreciate the abatement next year, you don't want to go the other way. You want to over-abate and then have to decrease it a year to get the taxpayers comfortable. So...
I have a lobby, I'm going to lobby for something right now. There's a few things going on that, in my opinion, would be cool of us to push off the decision for one more year. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Nelson, and truly, from a personal perspective, I totally understand where you're coming from. However, this administration is still very new. This is my sixth year here and I'm the most new. Okay? So this team is still figuring out where they want to go curriculum-wise with your district. And, and they're making very good thoughtful decisions. But you're now looking at an ELA adoption. You're going to be talking about probably social science, tech, science. You've got curricular issues at hand. You have devices in students' hands that are dying online right now because they're old. And you're going to need to discuss what you want to do about those devices. Those are going to cost money. You're talking about steam labs, which those are also going to cost money. All things that are good for students. These are beyond your capital needs. I think if, if it were my brothers, I would like for you to give us that one more year's time to bring back to you, this is what we see not just for this year, but for the next several years with what curriculum we have, you know, estimates for what it's going to look like in rollout, for what your technology looks like and how that's going to roll out. All those things that we've been talking about, they just haven't gelled together just yet. And at that point in time, then I will have the tools to give you a good five to seven year rollout as to what that looks like and then to tackle how do we handle our part budget. My big concern right now is we still haven't seen any numbers out of the state board of education as to what this evidence-based funding model looks like for us. We could be flat. And then you're just looking at CPI on your finer property taxes. There isn't going to be any increase in general state aid for the district. We don't know that yet. We still don't have numbers and we're talking about, the state board is still talking about, not until April will we see those. We don't have enough information on, on the table and, and we haven't completely gelled your curricular, your, really your purpose, your, your mission to Dr. Smith's point, your, your strategic plan has not gelled together enough for me to take those pieces and give you good numbers. So I guess this is my lobby for one more year to bring back to you.
Any other comments? Do we need to bring this up for discussion again for the next four days? Do we want to take Fran's suggestion into consideration? How do we, what do we need to decide this evening?
You know, I think we need a direction line as to whether we want to go over those all of the models, then we can craft the resolution.
I would support that. For filming the models, I would just, especially for this year, the executive Frances, or suggested. And exactly what Dr. Smith has asked and just really look at what's there and grab those models and...
We'll bring back all the, all the other models for the strategic plan and where we're going. That's happening. Tonight, we need a direction on whether or not we'll build the resolutions and models to bring this back for discussion on the 26th before action on the 12th.
And to be clear, the model is what would this picture look like over the next seven years, figuring something out to be agreed on?
Yeah. I think there'd be more information if it's better than less. How many hours of time does this involve Fran?
Well, I only have the ability to do a five-year model. Um, so the rest of it will have to be handpicked out of some estimate, which Cam will be done. I mean, I'll be working with Forecast Five to assist me with this, but, I mean, my, my concern is that additional, I, I would want to get some additional ideas from Dr. Smith and from Annabelle to run the, what else is there? I don't want to give you a model that isn't abatement without the other pieces. And, and my concern again is that those pieces haven't fully gelled together yet. We are still having those conversations. We are still making those decisions. We are still trying to figure out what the best directions to go.
So I, I just don't, I just don't want to, it's nice to have more information, it's more exciting to do this if you're all concerned. So here's what I think we owe, right? I think the board needs to take the position, so I think it's easy to come up with our action one way or another, or vote. It's okay if you say, we're accepting Fran's initial recommendation to put this off for a year, but I think we need to close out the discussion.
And closing out the discussion means what exactly? That we are agreeing as a board that we want to go through, we're agreeing as a board that we are comfortable with reducing our fund balance and then figuring out the best way to spend those additional funds? I mean, what?
It could be any way, but the, I mean, what I'm hearing is that the administration's recommendation is likely going to be to put this off. And so the best way for it to come to vote is with administration-level recommendation or the voter recommendation. You could phrase it the other way, you know, we'll vote on whether to, um, further investigate abatements or let it go for now. I mean, it isn't really, but I don't know what to phrase it. I think we just need to make a decision and move on so that they're not hanging out waiting for us to the side and Fran, you know, for her mind.
So again, my, my concern is we make, we give the impression that an abatement is going to save the lives and as far as money is concerned in the community. And so I see it as two separate issues. Yes, if we have a surplus, then we should spin it down for things and not take on an extra debt. And then we should pay for buildings or wonderful progress and things like that. But as we consistently marry these two issues, it gives the impression that if we keep levying the way we are, that it, it has the effect, that's my, that's my concern. The effect that people think that they're going to get as a result of an abatement is not necessarily the effect that they're going to get. And so as we keep saying that, like, we have to, you know, let our taxpayers know, I think we also need to let them know, again, that they are not so direct one-to-one related. So whatever we do may or may not help their own situation. And so there's two separate, two separate issues. Spin a surplus towards something that's going to help the district and, like Dana said, have nothing to do with me personally having my taxes go down. And so that's what I just want to make sure to be cautiously, you know, keep, as we say it, because it keeps getting put together and it's not so directly related.
So I think the focus should be on whether or not we are comfortable with reducing our fund balance.
Yes.
And then how we decide to reduce it or what we decide to reduce it on is to be determined. But if, if, if what I'm hearing Cam's saying, I think other people will agree, is, you know, we, we have a, we have a high fund balance and we don't need to necessarily have such a high fund balance. So we need to feel comfortable with reducing that and then we need to decide on what to spend aside results or with the help of, you know, the administration coming back to us with a clear plan. If Fran says 15 million, then what is the plan, you know, that you're going to come back to us with and we need to approve that will help spend that down. So it's not we're making promises to reduce your tax bill. It's we've got this high fund balance and there are things that we can be doing that directly support the growth and development of our students and our teachers, and this is how we are choosing to spend it. If that happens to be tax abatement, which I don't know, then okay, that might be one of five ways we decide to spend some of the funds in the fund balance. But I think the, to me, the bigger question is, you know, are we okay with the direction or the suggestion from Fran? And then are we willing to have the discussion later on about bringing the fund balance And we can't vote on anything, but I...
Well, yeah, so I guess why I would leave it is, um, taking on Fran, talk and elaborate recommendation that I do. I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All very much. Next item for discussion, Erin's lobby.
Officially, this was an information item. This was a discussion we had, and by law, we have to provide direct instruction to our students, um, directly appropriate touching, knowing everything that's in the news right now, to know that that is an important topic to talk with our children about, especially now comes to adults. So this would be contract, not a contract, we'll look at outside, but to come work with our students and provide the instruction. This year, in the future, I think we can look at providing this training with our social workers and psychologists. But for what is really a small fee to work with people who are experts in this field, what is appropriate and how to respond in situations where you may be uncomfortable, to other. So we will bring it back for action on the 26th.
Any questions? Next item, action item number nine. Bill was submitted and approved for approval by the board this month, this month. Mr. Brady's asked to review the bill for the month of February and has the opportunity to review them prior to the meeting.
I have had the opportunity and I did review the bills. And I will make your recommendation, I actually will, um, I will move to approve the amount of $785,618.65 for the month of February as presented.
Okay. So, roll call please. Okay. Brady?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Four. Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I have a motion, please, to approve payroll in the amount of $1 million, $446,016.62 for the month of February as presented? So, Mr. Huckabee?
Second.
Mr. Brady, roll call please. Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Forty. Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the three-year contract with Forecast Five to establish the five-lab data warehouse at a total cost of $34,455?
So moved.
Mr. Brady, Huckabee, second. Any discussion? Question? Roll call please. Okay, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Forty. Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the proposed 2018-2019 school year calendar? Huckabee?
Second.
Brady? Any questions, Tom? Roll call please. Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Forty. Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I please have a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the village of Flossmore to hire a shared communications manager?
Two moved.
Any questions?
Two items that we did address in, it said version five, it's actually version six, was to codify the language around district board's requirements, or hiring process and also the evaluation process. So we did catch a break.
Can I have a roll call, please? Okay. Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Forty. Yes, and the motion is passed. Can I please have a recommendation to approve the request to seek aid for the furniture and construction of the pilot steam lab at Serena Hill School? So, Mr. Huckabee? Second. Dr. Brady? Questions? Comments?
I have some questions.
Absolutely. Again, this is only to seek pricing, not to spend.
So I appreciate that this is only to seek pricing. However, we are a public body and when we say we're in, we put that thing out there, it's like a miracle of a contractor's office and my 10%. What is the $150,000 construction order? I, I'm not, unfortunately, that familiar with Serena's existing library space and so I'm, we're making heavy modifications and it looks like it's like building a house. It's a lot of...
Sure.
The drawing I have is just of the new lab, which includes all of the furniture, so I had to...
Right. No, but flooring can be included, ceiling, lighting, flexible power, reconfiguring, I guess would be the east side and the right, but the side where the circulation desk is for the library, there's also some flexible rooms back there that will be reconstructed, frankly, to make them more flexible. That's where the...
We're tearing walls down.
Um, extending, extending one wall up, correct.
And is this the entire library that's going to be converted or just the working? So...
So I don't know that this costs the transit to the other schools, so it's depending on the scope.
But, so there's three parts in the memo provided to us. So we have $98,000 for curriculum, which to me is, you know, the most obvious impact on the kid, right? So that you see direct results by having an actual curriculum. And I want to be able to have a STEM lab and I want the, our benefactor's gift to be well-spended. Then I see $63,000 in furniture. Then I see $62,000 in furniture and, but it looks cool, but furniture, nobody says, man, I remember elementary school, Ms. Nelson was a great teacher and I love my desk. And $62,000 in furniture and they're selling us, you know, it's adaptable and flexible. Hey, these tables are adaptable and flexible. I don't, I don't find it. I don't think it's going to have, I don't think the types of tables and chairs are going to have, is going to have any meaningful impact on the student's experience in what should be an awesome STEM lab. My idea is not even something that looks nice, makes people proud, that's fine. But it seems hot. And then when we add $150,000 of construction on top of that, which is essentially taking a large room and maybe not putting down some theater walls, but it's, you know, it seems awful hot. I thought when we initially saw this project and the gift we were looking at was in the realm of $200,000. So even if our benefactor's paying for it, this strikes me as about 30% more than it's worth. And, you know, neither the, either the construction or the $60,000 for the desks, the point that students experience in the curriculum centers, we need that. And then I'd rather save $100,000 in construction and desks and spend on teaching. So, this is, I talked, we mentioned this before when, when this came up, right? The problem is if you're out there shopping in the marketplace, you're buying from someone who's going to offer you a prepackaged solution, you're not going to do that. But the premium we'd be paying here for this is striking me as too high, way too high.
The premium being paid for?
To have a prepackaged STEM lab. But that furniture, that is not, that furniture is one, the drawing here is not striking me as $60,000 for the furniture. It strikes me as $25,000 for the furniture with, you know, 60, 60% more.
So it's actually, so we got into this space because we decided to, right, there was a company that was working with us who decided to stop because we informed them that we intended to seek other proposals. So from that aspect, we would take, you know, bits from multiple vendors on that. I think the thought behind the curriculum app, that's one package is there might be a little bit of flexibility in there. I think there's some technicals I think can come down.
Like though, I don't think.
For sure.
I'm by the dollar, still there may not be money in the fund.
Right.
But Kirby, yes. I mean.
Well, you know what? So, so I'll say this, for the kid that has sensory input issues or the kid that does not function well in a hard seat with a hard table, they will tell you that the thing that they remember is being able to sit on a wall or rock while they work. So I'm not necessarily saying yay or nay to 62 grand specifically, but I know that adaptable furniture comes at a higher cost than the types of chairs that you see in an average classroom. So I think, so sensory input is an issue, right, for a good number of kids and your traditional tables and chairs. I don't know if those are actual photos that this projected cost came from, but I'm hopeful that these are removable type furniture.
They are.
It's a little different than what you're usually thinking about, so that it really is appropriate for all kids. Too many kids are marginalized that just don't do well with desks and tables. It costs more money.
I'm with you on that. I don't want, I'm not sufficient, we cheap out on the space and buy plastic tables and $50 people cheering, but $60,000 furniture, it's like a thousand dollar chair.
I, to be clear, I don't want to spend this much.
Okay.
But it's, after working with Green Associates to get their input on what these costs could be, wanted to give an accurate projection.
So you answered my questions. I mean, we're just, in that bid process, I would much rather see a aggressive bid price furniture, as long as it still meets students' needs and destruction so that we can spend the money where it matters.
Agreed.
Roll call please. Brady?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Court? Yes, and the motion is passed. Approval of the 2018 life safety construction. And a motion to award the full scope project to Key Construction. Even adding the construction manager to the job, Key's award could save the district $250,000 over the next loan. Any motion? Simmons? Brady, second. Mr. Huckabee? Discussion, please?
So, it was a snow day, okay, but we were still hard at work and I had a great phone call that afternoon with Isabella and Key Construction and George Regal from Green Associates to frankly hear our concerns, the pieces that we appreciated about Key's work, but also the questions we had about their ability to complete the job of this scope effectively. At the end of the conversation, I certainly felt marginally better about this work. I feel between Fran and Green Associates, the plan they put in place that we will be able to effectively manage this work, have Scott on the ground in addition to the recommended construction manager, I feel like our team will be able to bring this project home. Having said that, going back and forth on Friday, we do have a list of, of demands for Key and for the most part, they are responsive to those. And being good stewards of this money, which is something we certainly talked about this evening, can't walk away from a quarter of a million dollars in savings. So we recommend Key to complete the summer 2018 construction.
Go ahead, Sim. Has there been any, I appreciate what you said and the woman that said absolutely $250,000 was not an insignificant sum. However, have there been, and just to ease my mind, has there been any concern that we've seen in terms of quality of the, of the product or has this strictly been a matter of timeline?
You know, not so much the quality, it's been a matter of probably the organization, perhaps, if the organization has a approach to work. You know, some things that were installed perhaps incorrectly, they'll get it through our special office, so they'll be corrected. But as far as quality, you know, taking sure that has to do something, no, not so much.
Okay. So in terms of the end product, whenever it's ended with the punch list of things that need to go back, be fixed, there's a general consensus that it's a quality product, that money was well spent, that it's not something like, I know we, there's been some issues here of the cables happening with the asphalt, you know, or some project years ago that he before me and then, you know, looking into well, they didn't do this right or they missed this. You know, I'm always looking, you know, very paranoid homeowner, you know, like somebody's working on the roof, is that thing going to come down when it snows? You know, even though we've got a good savings. So I'm, I, and I think in savings is, you know, I'd much rather, you know, feel that my, my charges in this, in this community, meaning the children here, are in equality construction and that things aren't falling apart. And as long as we're comfortable with that, you know, as much as you can be comfortable with any project, you can't see the future, I would certainly support that. So that's, there hasn't been any, like, real concern expressed?
No, I'd say the process has been a concern.
Okay. But the end product, in terms of the quality, has been generally?
Will be fine.
Okay.
Well, I agree with Mr. Brady's, quality is definitely a key thing, but timeliness is also a key thing. So I guess the question that I have to ask, there are projects that have been in the past, where the timeliness was a question, leaving at the significant savings of $250,000 project parameters built into the contract, if these things are not, if this project is not finished in the time we matter, that there are penalties in some sense or money that comes back to the district or timelines that are not met.
Yes, and there's that to your question. You know, and another thing that I will also add is that we're about a month at least ahead of what we were a year ago, that we were talking about the project we're talking about that's not finished. And a month at this point of the year makes a huge difference. We have the equipment, they have long lead times, just like we had equipment last summer, the hardware, hardware has a long lead time. There was a very, there were a lot of parts to yet project, as there are a lot of parts to try to clean up. But we're early in game, you know, we get the word made, kind of, hoping to do. We're going to monitor, you know, some bills on shop drawings, ordering equipment, as Dr. Smith mentioned, you know, we have a list of things. A lot of them are simply qualifications of what's already in the contract documents, but the point is to emphasize, we've asked that they provide us with, you know, copies of orders of the equipment, according to what has been ordered. So we're really going to kind of monitor all the pieces very carefully. And the idea is that when we receive some bills in time of manner, we turn them around in time of manner, a book will get ordered, you know, we track the words out. So this kind of tied to the previous question you had asked about, sorry, the teacher institute days, potentially on a Wednesday so that the students could start on a full week, this summer is probably a little bit tight. Frankly, that is our concern with Key's for timelines. I think that's where this construction manager piece comes in, ensuring that, not that the work's being done correctly, but it is progressing appropriately as well.
I have some questions about the air conditioning units. They're paying essentially $600,000, $700,000 to get a chiller unit instead of a DX. So the existing units are DX, right? And we have some issues with condensation?
Yeah, Scott, you'll be able to try to enter a little bit more.
But it's, it's condensation, right? The duct always is warm, or warm, it is no better than condensation, right?
It's not ductwork we're talking about. It's more of the way each system performs in each classroom. Okay? The DX units run, cycle a lot throughout the day and they don't give the opportunity to dehumidify. So the space is very humid. These are interior spaces we're talking about.
But that's a question of sizing, right? The unit's not sized properly for the room, you have that?
Yes.
It's not an inherent difference between a DX unit and a.
True, but moving forward, each DX unit is its own system. So when you're looking at 25 different systems that are 15, 20 years old, it's very difficult to maintain versus one chiller system, which is, in my opinion and in my experience, very easy to maintain. I've never had any kind of experience, a time where I couldn't get a chiller system up and running at least 75% in some kind of situation where it was on a malfunction or something like that.
All right, so we're banking on, you know, fewer penetrations in the roof.
Correct.
Over 27.
Yes.
And it's still a $700,000 add.
Yeah, so Scott said you're dealing with one more piece of equipment posted, one pretty smaller piece.
Sure, but we're also now able to hide water very much from the chiller.
Correct.
And you're handling it during this question.
Correct.
And so, I mean, if there's opportunity for savings in this contract, it would be to not get the chiller. It's a significant capital issue, you know, if those units, the DX units prove to be a maniac nightmare, well, it would be a Scottish problem because we're retired.
Yeah, well.
So, you know, as far as sell us, why we really need to spend an extra $700,000 to get a chiller unit. As far as 27 units, you know, penetrations in the roof and sizing them correctly, right, those are all execution problems. If we trust our contractor to execute properly, install it properly, seal it properly, size it properly for the classrooms, we save $700,000 in capital for the next 20, 30 years.
Well, you're assuming you do for the next 20, 30 years.
Yeah.
Yeah, the question is, as Scott mentioned, the reality of this, if you're dealing with one piece of equipment that's supposed to be quite consistent, then if then at this point is that that's a better long-term solution, then not insisting with the system we've got.
How much are we spending annually to maintain those systems?
The DX units?
Yeah.
We budget, not just for air conditioning, but for heating, we budget about $100,000 for HVAC. And I would, I would say easily half of that is air conditioning issues.
What was the, how much are we paying the construction manager?
50.
50?
Not 50, it's probably going to be less.
And how long, this is just summer project, how many months?
Well, be ready, it's three months. Two and a half.
Two and a half.
So it's a patch and a bleach from the time of start.
What's he, how many classrooms are affected if they don't finish on time?
Oh, depends on the board.
So, well, it's the AC units that are affecting the classrooms, right?
Yeah. Well, so if they don't finish at Parker, it's really, it's the roof that's supposed to hold it, build it. So that's a challenge, a delegation, same thing, and how to build. Them not finishing means that potential roof is not finished and then that could reappear by following the schedule.
Is there anything else that has, that you learned or that has changed between the time you brought this before us at the last meeting and now? Because for some reason I felt like at the last meeting, we were moving away from going with Key, even though they were the most fit, but we were just not feeling comfortable moving forward with them and we were leaning, I thought more towards, but one that moved right above Key. So is there something that's changed in the past few weeks?
I wouldn't say there was anything magical that's changed, I think in comparing the bidders, there wasn't a $800,000 difference in quality. And because of that, it's really hard to, again, recommend not going with the lowest responsible bidder. And then we really have not discussed the thought of adding a construction manager at that point, which frankly helps everyone feel a little bit better because the person we're looking at, we do have previous experience with, those are buildings.
To me, that was the piece, that was the piece that kicked me over and going, okay, this could work. This is a construction manager who we have a lot of experience with. He was a construction manager on the Parker edition when we were dealing with tower construction and there was a lot of concern there. That project came in on time, on budget, and I believe it was a large triggering cause of that structure manager. So we have some, we have a lot of kids in personal.
And the other, I believe that the other piece was potentially the second lowest, was a well-regarded company and they turned out to be third, so we could have gone to that three numbers.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
What, oh, I'm sorry.
Do we, I think we need to clarify what we're putting out because there's.
Oh, okay, I will reread the motion. The motion is to award the full scope project to Key Construction, which also includes the hiring of a construction manager, which brings Key award down to $250,000 difference between them and the next bidder. We are bidding to award Key Construction the full scope, which includes a construction manager.
So where I was unclear was. So, where I was unclear was there is a, there's a statement here about an additional four hundred thousand dollars for asbestos.
We've not brought that back in. We're still seeking.
Got it.
It does not include that?
Correct. That's the current estimate. Still seeking this.
That's a motion for the second order?
Yes. Any other questions? Roll call? Simmons?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Court. Yes, the motion is passed. Next item on the agenda is executive session, a motion, please, to move to executive session. So, just got a matter relating to personnel, five I L C S, local desk two D one. Simmons? Roll call? Okay, I have the person who made the motion, two seconds there. Okay, I did. Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Court. Yes, the motion is passed. We should be in there about five minutes.
There's no action to follow.